I had that meeting Friday. If there's photo opportunity, we can discuss the color of the drawing exhibit at Crystal River High School.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm going to open the regular meeting of the Citrus County School Board, and we have a break exercise with Mr. Kennedy.
Good afternoon, board members. Well, I've scoured the county again looking for some of our students' creativity. And while I had an opportunity of emceeing the La Canto Middle School Talent Showcase this last week, next session I'm going to have some wonderful talent. One of those young performers was Ms. Bittner in the back audience there, who did a wonderful rendition on the piano, and she is just a joy. Although this time she went a little more ragtime than classical, so I thought that was, you know, really reaching out there. This time I'm doing something a little different. And in the past I've done music. This time we have producers amongst our students. This young lady, I had the honor of knowing Ms. Devon Newton, who is a Crystal River High School freshman in the Health Academy. She is with my son in the biomedical program with Science With Bias, who I can tell you I know Ms. Deutschman can well appreciate, because Ms. Deutschman used to be one of his helpers, because her background is in chemistry. But when I knew Ms. Newton, Ms. Newton looked a little bit more like this at Central Ridge Elementary. And so if you turn on your monitors here, Ms. Newton, though, was always, always just a joy to be around. I had a chance to travel to Washington DC with her and her mom. And she has done something, I think, that was remarkable that I wanted to bring to you all. And that is that she developed, in her transition from elementary to middle school, tips and tricks of survival for middle school students. And she actually turned her work into workbooks. And what I really got excited about was into a video movie. And so we decided we would edit it down for you so that you could get a sense of what it is like in this preview clip. And I wanted to show it to you and then bring up. Is our sound on?
Congratulations on finishing elementary school. The transition to middle school can be nerve-wracking. I know it was for me. While the teachers were fantastic about covering the differences in what to expect to middle school academics and homework, I was more worried about everything else. Wide-open campuses, making friends, lockers, gym class. I spent hours obsessing over what I didn't know.
I was most worried about my hard classes and having to change home run to school, getting into my locker and being able to remember my locker combination, and making new friends at my new school.
I was scared of, like, kids being bigger than me, being mean, stealing stuff. I was scared of having lockers and only like three minutes in between classes. And I was scared of having like seven different classes of teachers.
One of the things I was worrying about in middle school was my sister being the same grade as me, since she's a year younger. And the teachers, I didn't know how they were gonna, like, be. I didn't know how strict they were gonna be. I was kind of frightened.
As you can see, you're not the only one feeling nervous. This video is designed to assist you in making your transition to middle school a great one. Friends are one of the most important things about middle school. The easy part is keeping friends. The hard part is making them. Be prepared if some friends that you have now in elementary school aren't your best friends in middle school. People change, and class schedules don't always allow for you to be with your old friends. Do not be afraid of your locker. Be comfortable with it. Teachers will gladly help you if you can't get it open. Afraid of forgetting your combination? Keep a slip of paper in a semi-secret place in your binder, just in case. Soon, it'll be like night and day for you. There isn't time to go to your locker after every single class. So at open house, play with experience, you will go to your locker. Many students are worried that in middle school there's tons and tons of bullies. I'm here to put that to rest. In the Citrus County School System, there is a zero-tolerance policy for bullying. If you are bullied or you witness bullying, tell a trusted adult, and they will contact the Student Resource Officer at your school, and you will remain anonymous. Remember, booking and pantsing are forms of bullying.
I wish I could tell my younger self to just be myself, and that middle school isn't that hard or difficult, and there aren't, like, there are little new abilities.
I would've told myself not to be annoying or loud and obnoxious, because people don't like that.
But if I could go back and tell myself something, I would say that it's not as bad as it sounds, middle school, and that the teachers aren't that harsh.
With that, I'd like to introduce Ms. Devon Newton. And she can also give the pledge after she talks about her project here.
Hi, my name is Devon Newton, and I'm 14 years old, and I am currently attending Crystal River High School. I am officially a senior Girl Scout and created this video to earn my Silver Award. And a Silver Award is the second highest award that you can earn within Girl Scouts. The highest is a Gold Award, and you can kind of compare that to an Eagle Scout Award in Boy Scouts. So a Silver Award is like one step under that. I chose to cover this certain topic for my Silver Award because my middle school transition wasn't a great one. When Pine Ridge was rezoned, I was in 5th grade at Central Ridge Elementary. As you know, Citrus Springs is its next-door neighbor, so naturally, all my friends went there, while I felt alienated to Crystal River Middle School. It's hard enough dealing with bell schedules, lockers, multiple teachers, but then to add on being a social outcast, it's a kid's worst nightmare. Anyway, on the first day, I managed to find most of my classes, struggled to open my locker only about a dozen times, and then came the lunchroom. I walked into the illuminated social beehive, commonly known as the cafeteria, and I gulped at the clicks that had already formed. Luckily, there is an empty table, so relieved, I plopped down and kept to myself those agonizing 25 minutes. For the next week or so, I got to know my PB and J sandwich better than I knew myself. Luckily, I eventually made a group of close-knit friends, but I still remember that feeling of loneliness. It's extremely difficult to adjust to new situations. I feel strongly that I should cover this topic and save other students from the things that I felt. This video is designed to make the transition from elementary to middle school a little less scary by covering everything from belltimes to friendships. I would love for this video to be posted on the Citrus County School District website and be shown county-wide in the 5th grade classrooms. I would love to hear any improvements you would suggest. I know I would've felt so much better having something like this during my transition. Thank you.
Definition of booking, I'm sorry, booking, and I forgot the second word.
Pantsing? Well, sometimes in the hallways, kids are trying to joke around by booking. What happens is you're carrying your books to class, and they'll like come up behind you or in front of you and knock them down. And that's considered bullying, and pantsing is whenever, like, I don't know what gender it's more common in, I'm not really sure. But I would assume it's the guys, because their pants are looser. But just to joke around, even though, like, just kidding just hurts, but they'll come up and pull down the pants. So just remind everyone that that is bullying. It's not joking, so. Thank you.
I appreciate you asking, Ms. Powers. I was wondering and wasn't about to ask.
Ms. Devon, thank you so much. Would you leave us out in the last if we don't stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The First Citizen's comments is reserved for comments on items requesting approval on the agenda. A second opportunity is available for any subject at 5:45 PM. I've got a couple of green cards. Are these things on the agenda? Oh, probably need to adopt the agenda. Can I have a motion too? Thank you, Ms. Deutschman. We have a motion by Ms. Deutschman and a second by Ms. Powers. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries five-zero. Lauren Lenora or Bobby Promarte? Are these things on the agenda that we're going to be voting on?
I don't believe so. It may be for open later. I can speak now if you prefer. It's just a general opinion of, I'd like to speak to the board about my experience as a parent in the school system.
Okay. And Ms. Bobby, is yours on the agenda, or do you know?
I don't know.
I don't think it is, so if you ladies would wait until 5:45, I think it is. Okay? Thank you. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Powers and a second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five-zero. And Ms. Verderami, do we have?
Yes, ma'am. We have one donation that's accepted on the consent agenda and is a $25 donation to Crystal River Primary School and the Parent Teacher Organization.
Thank you, Ms. Verderami. All right. We need to recognize Michael Nicholas Slusser on attaining the rank of Eagle Scout.
Good afternoon, members of the school board, Superintendent Himmel, Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Block, and Margaret Mullin, and Assistant, our superintendent, or I'm sorry, our attorney, Wes Bradshaw. I am coming to you again to share some continued excitement of the unique and wonderful students that we have in our district. Today, we're here to recognize Michael Nicholas Slusser. If Michael, or Nick, sorry, would come on up to the podium. Nick is a senior at La Canto High School, and he actually received his Eagle Scout Award. And so we're going to do it a little bit different today. I'm going to tell you, or actually, Nick is going to share with you about his project. And then he is also a member of the IB program. So as you know, Derek Bittner is here, and he's going to share his accolades in the IB program at La Canto High School. So Nick, I'll let you share your project. And I'm going to send this around. These are the pictures of this project.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It's a real honor to be here to tell you about my award. So before I begin explaining what my project was, I would like to tell you about the foundation that I did it for. It's A32K9 Deputy Dogs. And in case any of you are not familiar with this, it's a nonprofit organization that donates law enforcement bloodhounds to the Federal Bureau of Investigation and every police department across the state. And they have over 200 dogs right now in service. So, you know, it's a really great thing. So what I did for my project was I went to Duke Snodgrass, he's the founder, Duke and Angie Snodgrass. Then I went to their house, and I was working there. I do community service there every once in a while. And they had an old rundown building there that was being used for nothing. It was, the only thing that was in there was their water pump. That was it. And there was mold, and it smelled bad. They just, it was kind of a dump, really. And I, I, I mean, he said that he wanted to eventually turn it into an infirmary for sick puppies, or a place to keep puppies for when they're newly born, and where sick dogs can go. And I was a life scout at the time, and I knew, and I had been looking for an Eagle Scout project for a while. And I looked at this, and I just knew that it had to be this, because I've been a member of their organization since I was like 3. So I started raising money. And the first thing I did was I cut the window out and I put a door in. And from that moment, for 18 months, and 657 hours, and many, many helpers along the way. And with the help of IB, and that's what made it really helpful. That's what increased the time that I did it in, because the classes I took taught me organization skills, which is absolutely crucial for anyone that ever wanted to be an Eagle Scout. If you have no organization, there's no way. That was so much work. And without IB, I don't even know how I would've done that. And being a leader, you know, in IB, I've learned, I won't say that I'm, you know, like the upper part of the school, but it has taught me how to be a leader if I was to ever be put in a scenario like that, to know that I have the ability to lead. And whenever I went out to my project to work, there was always, you know, five, two, at least three people there working. And I was in charge of them. There was no adults there. I was completely in charge of all of the adults and all of the kids. And about five months ago, we completed it. The tile was put in about two months ago. And now it's up and running for sick, sick puppies.
As you know, just for the audience, this is Mr. Bittner. Mr. Bittner is the coordinator of our IB program at La Canto High School.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Superintendent Himmel. I don't have a, I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking, but I did want to touch base quickly about a wonderful young man, Nick Slusser here. And I could talk about his academics, and I could talk about his extracurriculars, and I could talk about a lot of wonderful things he's done. I think what impresses me the most about Nick is his character. He is really one of the very best, most honest, most trustworthy, most just fantastic young men I've ever met. And I'll just give you a little quick example. The first time I ever really had a chance to meet Nick and talk to Nick, besides just at the open houses that we kind of have, he was at school. I had to go find him, and his grandma was there with him, and she's here right now. And I remember very vividly how respectful and how helpful he was to his grandmother. And I think that's, little things like that really give you insight into what a person is like. And so I just wanted to say, a fantastic young man. We're very proud that he's in the IB class 2014.
And I don't care what Nick says, we do consider you in the top four in the school.
Make sure, introduce your family.
Family, come up. Mr. Bittner, you've got to come too.
I will.
I'm very proud to be Nick's mother.
I'm just mom. I'm just mom too.
Okay. We need to talk about Red Ribbon Week proclamation. Do I have anybody here to do that? All right.
It's always one of my favorite weeks at school, because red's my favorite color in every place.
Hi, I'm Karen Meeks, and I'm one of the board members of the Partners, well, they used to call Partners for Substance Research. We just changed our name to the Anti-Drug Coalition. And it rings clear. Everyone knows what we are. And this is, we are to proclamation for Red Ribbon Week. And Red Ribbon Week is celebrated, say that really fast, and you sound like I'm a fun. Red Ribbon Week is nationally, but we do it in all the school systems with the SAD Club, Students Against Destructive Decisions. And the SAD Clubs do celebrations all during the week of Red Ribbon Week, and it's a lot of neat things. But I wanted to give a kudos to, to, two of our SAD Club members went to a convention this summer, and it is Community Anti-Drug Coalitions of America. And they are on the brochure being sent out for next year. Two members, one from Crystal River High School, Tyler, and Nathan Meeks from Citrus High School, went to a training in Texas for a week and learned how to bring red ribbon kind of concepts back to their school and their community. So we are excited to say that we've got youth, and they're doing great things.
And before the board approves their proclamation, I'd like to read that into the minutes. Proclamation, Red Ribbon Week. Whereas the Citrus County School Board and the Anti-Drug Coalition of Citrus County value the health and safety of all our citizens, and whereas substance abuse is particularly damaging to one of our most valuable resources, our children, and a contributing factor in the three leading causes of death for teenagers, accidents, homicides, and suicides. And whereas it is the goal of Red Ribbon Week, Citrus County Schools and the Anti-Drug Coalition of Citrus County to involve families, schools, businesses, churches, law enforcement agencies, and service organizations in all aspects of this campaign and establish an atmosphere that supports awareness, education, and ongoing initiatives to prevent illegal drug use. And whereas the Red Ribbon Week campaign theme promotes family and individual responsibilities for living healthy, drug-free lifestyles without illegal drugs or the illegal use of legal drugs. And whereas there are many activities planned during the Red Ribbon Week campaign in Citrus County. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Sandra Sam Himmel, serving as the Superintendent of Citrus County Schools, do hereby proclaim October 21st through October 25th, 2013, as Red Ribbon Week. And I would just like to publicly thank these ladies of the Anti-Drug Coalition of Citrus County for your partnership with our schools. And you impact our students every single day, and we appreciate what you do for us.
It's a wonderful part.
Thank you. It is a good one. Thank you. Okay, so could we have a vote to approve Red Ribbon Week? Thank you, Ms. Valfor. And do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries five-zero.
Ms. Himmel sent around some information to us for all schools telling us elementary, middle, and high what celebrations are going to take place, that we want to drop hope, we know it's happening. Appreciate that, Ms. Himmel.
Thank you. Okay, business and support services. Mr. Burcoff.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Himmel, school board members. I'm here to request approval of the professional service agreement for Pleasant Grove Elementary and Inverness Primary Kitchen renovations.
All right. Do we have a motion? We have a motion by Ms. Deutschman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Do we have any questions or comments?
I do it. I certainly agree with the renovations of the kitchen in Pleasant Grove and Inverness Primary. But what I have a problem with is the professional service agreement as such in general, professional service agreement here.
No, I was giving my iPad over, because I couldn't open it.
You couldn't? Was something texted off?
I couldn't.
Mark that down.
It's a bad day.
If you look at page 5, where it talks about the ownership of documents. And when I was reading that, and this is something I've actually done quite a bit, that's the previous thing pertaining to this, but then I thought, wait a minute. I remember in the past, when I hired the architect to build, to design a house, and at that point, the agreement with the architect, and what is the Association, American Architects Association, or what is the?
AIA, American Association of Architects.
Okay, just the first. That in that agreement was the fact that the architect owned proprietary rights for the intellectual properties of the design of the house. And when I read this, I thought, well, this is applying to the school. But it also means that the properties here, the states of properties here, are owned by the school board. And it sort of pushes the architect and the designer to the side. Now, but this cannot be right, because these are intellectual properties a person has, and they designed for us, but still, it's their work. It's like a writer writing a book. I can't take his book and duplicate it and start selling it about. And I thought, this does, this agreement does not seem an agreement that we should have. We should have the architect having an interest, a vested interest in his work. He's the one who designed it. And the school board certainly paying for what was done, the work that's done. But the architect designed it. And I think, okay, how can I extend that in my mind? What am I thinking? Actually, the school board could take the work of this architect and sell it to every single state in the United States and refund the property for it. Now, we would not do that, but we could do that, the way this is written. I don't like the way it's written. I think that the architect should have the interest stated, the vested interest that it should not be sold property to the school board.
So, Ms. Powers, the only thing, I would, I would agree exactly how you're understanding it. And having done this numerous times in the private sector, and AIA agreements are ones that are written to the benefit of the architect, I would argue. And so that's why that's in there.
Oh, I can understand.
So what I would say is that when we hire them, we are hiring them to, in essence, write a book that we want all the royalties, the ownership of, because we've hired them for that. So I would absolutely, I want us to be able to do it. So I actually believe that the contract is most protective to Citrus County School Board, where we do own and retain the ownership of that. And I want us to retain and have the ownership of that, because to a large extent, our staff has been involved in that. The taxpayers' dollars have been involved in designing and helping design that. We are simply hiring them to execute the work and design that we are setting forth. And so I don't want him to take that and make money off it.
I want, it's a partnership. I think both of us have a vested interest in it. And the school board, certainly, I want everything that is done with the school board, the school board has some control. But I also want the architect, this intellectual property who, whose blood, sweat, and tears in terms of mentally, in terms of creative efforts went into it, to have some ownership. I don't see it as an either-or, like you were saying. The AIA certainly would want it to be solely, you know, the architect. But I don't. I want it to be part and parcel. And I can't support a document that says, okay, now, you designed it, put all of your creative efforts in it, and we'll take it and do what we want to with it, and we'll make it sell it to Hong Kong. But whatever we want, we can do.
Mr. Burcoff, has the architect asked to retain ownership and licensing of the plan?
No.
If he doesn't want it, then I want it. And that's, yes, but in here, we're sort of using a hammer, you know? You agree to the ownership of the documents, the school board owning the documents, or why would you leave? I'm sure, that's the implied message there.
Well, he's not coming at us with a proposal that he's drafted alone in isolation. This is, there's a team effort here from the school's perspective. So it's not like we're buying something that's ready-made. He's already put a copyright on it. It's something that's a collaborative effort. He's doing the job that we asked him to. Find print on it and build something that we can pass on to contractors and subcontractors.
It's good, it's build a house, but you know, and we could be a put-through bedroom, two, five bedrooms, six, whatever it is. But this, this person, who never happens to be, their creativity is the one that goes into doing that. And we're saying, we could take it. We can take the song lyrics all across the world. I just cannot see that that's a fair type of agreement. It might be to the benefit of the school board. We might be able to reap more monies from it, but fair? I don't think it's fair. And I know that the person has not asked, but as I said, it's something that's written in a contract or put out as the ownership document, we'll agree to it, we're agreeing to nothing else, and I think that's a hammer.
If you want me to weigh in. If you look at an AIA document, it is drafted completely into the favor of an architect.
As I mentioned, I have done that.
It is completely unfair to anyone other than the architect. So when I drafted this document, as I do all contracts for the school board, I drafted in the best interest of the school district, and with the school district's best interest at heart, and tried to draft it to our benefit as much as possible.
What benefits? What can be?
First, the architect didn't ask to modify the document. Second, if the architect did ask to modify the document, my legal advice would be no. Find an architect, because they are coming to us, asking us to do work for us, and in doing so, I'm going to draft the document to protect the school district and the school board to the best of my abilities.
And that's the hammer, I'm saying. And I, and I take this concept and applying it across the board to other things. And we do not say, you're hired as a teacher, therefore you have to do everything you say right now and do it. We don't do that. We're fair. We have the job, descriptions, job outlines.
But if a teacher creates material, correct me if I'm wrong, but if a teacher creates, but our staff is working for us to do that, and we are hiring him to do work for us, so it's no different that if they're, how is it different?
Well, you haven't, you have the contract.
Definitely not different. Anytime you contract with someone, if you're hired by someone, then all intellectual property rights generally are becoming property of the person that you, that hired you.
When you, when architects.
They can negotiate.
I just said, it has been in the past that the rights stay with the architect. You have to go back and pay more or whatever, to be able to get more, to get the plans a second time, a third time. It stays with the architect. But I think either or is wrong. We own everything, or he owns everything. I think it's a collaborative effort. And I don't, and I do think, though, like if we build it and then maybe build it a second time, and he charges for reviewing it a second time, which is fair. But if we start selling the plans, we wouldn't have, but selling the plans to everybody else and making a lot of money off that, it's something very wrong with that.
Can we do that? Because I'd be for that.
Yes, we can. Yes, we can. Yes, we can.
My job is, in my opinion, is to draft a contract that is the most beneficial to the school district as possible, and to protect the school district as much as possible.
And he's not disputing the contract more than?
No, no, no.
I have not heard, I think that we have used this particular contract for several years now, Mr. Burkhart, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe we've had any architect or anyone just come in and requested a modification to this portion of the contract. There are some things that are negotiable, but I don't believe, Alan can correct me if I'm wrong, that we've ever had anybody say, I want to modify this, this particular portion of the contract. So they, and I believe they get the contract with the big good.
You know, what is?
As part of the documents, is a copy of the contract go out with them?
I send them a draft once they're selected.
Correct. So they know what the contract is before, before they sign it in the office.
When we contract with an architect to design a school for us, we're small potatoes. But if you go to Orange County, they may build 10 of that same school. They come up with their model and they copy it 10 times. If the architect has exclusive rights to the plan, he could charge you $1 million.
I wasn't arguing.
Re-design it every year.
I'm saying partnership, I think it's wrong for either one.
Well, you may feel it's wrong, but this is a contract that they, that they signed. They don't want to do business with us, and it's quite simple. If they don't want to do business with us, they don't sign the contract. We have to protect our rights as well. So, no one's quibbling.
I just think it should be a partnership, it shouldn't be exclusively where we hold an hammer on somebody. Nor would should they do it on us, like you're saying, and it shouldn't happen either way.
Is there a liability issue associated with the architect using a plan that was developed exclusively, applying it upon, and then the school falls down and they sue us?
I think the architect would probably have some liability there, but the purpose of the contract is not to allow them. The purpose is not to allow them to do that, so.
Okay, any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
We have, do we have a motion?
We do.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay, four to one. All right, approve the professional service agreement for Crystal River High School Gym Electric Relocation, Newwood Gym Floor, and Miscellaneous Work Items.
I'll go ahead and move, I'm sorry, move, move to approve the professional service agreement for Crystal River High School Gym Electric Relocation, Newwood Floor, and Miscellaneous Work Items.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I pulled this off the agenda for this exclusive purpose of putting to rest what's at fault. Are we going to fix the gym and live with it? Or are we still going to hold out hope that we'll have a Phase 3 at Crystal River High School?
Oh, as far as I know, future work at the gym is not included in the five-year plan, five-year work plan.
Is not?
Is not.
Future work at the gym, you mean replacing it?
Correct. This is essentially, this is it.
Okay, this is, this is the moment. Now, has the school, is the school in agreement with this? Has the advisory council had an opportunity to discuss this, and this is what's being decided for them?
We work with the principal.
Okay. Mr. Brooks, do you know that there's been a discussion at the advisory council level about the gym and that looking forward with Phase 3?
I'm not familiar. Dr. Conner's probably did that, but I'm not familiar.
Okay.
And all I can tell you is since I've worked from some of that community over there, that they were pleased that we were going in there to do what we could, because they knew the new gymnasium that they put on, or Phase 3, because of funding and that type of thing. And I know that we went over and walked around, maintenance and Alan's team went over there, they checked the structure and everything, they're getting rid of all the picks, all checked out, so they felt like, once they got a plane painted, and this huge box out of the gym, and the new floor, that it will be something that we can live with for several years.
Well, several. How much money is this costing us? $350,000? About as far as several.
Yeah, it's a far cry from the new gym, it'll be like seven or eight.
For that whole Phase 3. So I guess, I guess.
And when I win the lottery, there'll be a new gym.
I guess for Ms. Bryant's sake, because she was, yes.
I know, that was the part I was really worried about.
I don't want to, I don't want to vote for this, and then have 20 people come in next week and say, we didn't know anything about this, didn't you ask us what we thought about it?
I went on a tour up there, and Dr. Conner did mention the SAD committee about the board.
And then the question still goes back to, okay, let's just say that if we polled everyone, and I would assume that if somebody said, we, you know, new floor, new gym, or if they didn't have to pay for it, they're going to want the new gym. But I don't know that it's realistic that for the, for the next seven to 10 years, we have, we've indicated that we will have those funds to do that. So without that, that dollar amount, I think that, and I wish for Ms. Bryant's sake in particular, that we could say, we could vote for a new gym, but I think at this point, $300,000 is maintaining our asset for at least that seven to 10-year framework. Is that?
I don't have a problem with that. I just want to make sure we've had opportunity for it.
Well, I'm looking at the floor, the existing floor that's there, Mr. Brooks took me on a tour, and I did see that there's tape holding that floor together, so it does become a safety issue. That type of floor surface, what's the longevity of the current floor surface that's there? 25, 30 years?
Yeah, but it's the point where we either need to fix it or replace it.
Kind of replace it. Looking at the longevity or the lifespan of a wooden floor, would it be more than the existing type of flooring that's there now?
It's most likely that same range.
Looking at the maintenance cost, I know the maintenance, just talking to Larry Salomon over there, who's the head custodian, he said that the maintenance cost for the existing floor is phenomenal, because it's just a mop-and-go type of a surface. Looking at the maintenance expense of a wood floor compared to the padding, are we looking at more of a maintenance expense? Do we need to hire another person out there to deal with that floor?
No, it's a minimal expense, annually maintenance contracts for the floors to be screened, which is a light sanding, and then a single reco, it doesn't require restryting.
And that's one secret?
Yeah, typically they do, they do some of that, and then they, the PD teachers involved, it's a little made surface, you know, which does mop and mop, it doesn't require.
Okay, so the maintenance on the wood floor would be a little bit more expensive just because of that resurfacing need, which we don't have that need with the padded-type material that's in there now. But you feel from your expertise that the wood floor is going to give us a longer lifespan?
Yes, and I believe this is the last wood floor in the middle and high schools for us to.
Alan, if you could, because I don't think Ms. Valfor is aware of the difference that this would be the last one, and if you could maybe explain where this, this floor fits into that.
About seven or eight years ago, the athletic directors uniformly agreed that if we could not replace their floors, then they would, they would wait until we could replace them with wood floors.
They prefer wood floors. The athletic.
Oh, yes.
Definitely handle, want the wood over the padding. Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
And I don't think you need any tape.
Yeah, I know there's tape up there, it is a safety hazard.
Oh, it is so not pretty.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further questions or comments?
No, I support the gym floor totally, but what I don't support is the contract, the service contract.
Is that what you meant?
Yes.
Sorry.
So for that reason, I support the other half for, you know, the last two or three years, because I don't support the contract.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Four to one. You gotta get what you can get.
Is that always your question, though? When are we doing it?
It'll always be my question, obviously.
Other questions answered.
All right, Forest Ridge Elementary, replacement of air conditioning system chillers. Oh, I voted on that, because my brother didn't have a job.
That's right.
So we have it. I did not abstain.
Is that the, that's the first time in?
Forever. And he is looking for a job, so if anybody wants to hire him, please do. Because they don't want any more work.
Are you there? We're not building schools anymore.
Mr. Burkhart. Forest Ridge Elementary, replacement of air conditioning system chillers, approved sole source recommendations. Could I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the sole source recommendations.
And the whole, the whole like saying too.
Approve advertised biz for Forest Ridge Elementary, replacement of air conditioning system chillers.
Thank you, Ms. Valfor.
I'll suck at that.
All right. I have a motion by Ms. Valfor and a second by Ms. Powers. Any questions or comments?
I have one request. After the article in the paper about the chillers, instead of our student performance data, Mr. Kennedy eloquently answered some, some questions that people from the committee had asked us, and you went, and you did great things about stuff we actually didn't know. So either, can you sort of reiterate that, or?
I stole it from them. I just.
It was interesting to me, because we didn't have that long of a discourse about it. We didn't think it was that big of a deal, apparently it was. So, and I've had people ask me too about it, so we should go back and review why the chillers didn't meet their life expectancy.
Alan, I'm not sure I CC'd you on it, so I apologize if you.
You stole it from Mr. Muller.
Between Mr. Muller and Mr. Calasante. But I can do it if you don't want it, but you can, you know, you know the, the deal there, right?
But you wrote it.
I wrote it, okay.
But I can do it.
So once upon a time, there was, there was a, no.
In a faraway land?
Before Mr. Calasante was in his position, and I think that was important, because Mr. Calasante and staff brought to us the recognition that the Forest Ridge AC was not going to outlive, and Alan chime in here anytime wrong, was not going to outlive, was not going to give the life expectancy we would have hoped.
Oh, Mr. Kennedy, if I could interrupt. Since that, since we came to you last time, I learned some things also, which is Hillsborough County actually plans to replace their air-cooled chillers on a 15-year life cycle.
Okay.
The school opened in 2000, so chiller came in a little before that.
No, I appreciate that. One of the, the things that our own people recognized was that this was a new type of chiller than what we had previously had, was it not? And it definitely meant that the maintaining of it was different than we had typically done. The staff at that time then really understood after the fact of what some of the expectations of that taken care of was. This current staff has actually been babying it to actually get a greater life out of it than probably we would have had. And as a result of that, we've, we've actually been able to milk it along here a little longer than we probably would have. It's gotten to the point that it's, I think one of the things is, not only is it not being energy efficient and ready to break down, but it's unbalanced for the school. And what I was concerned in was that in responding to one of the people that contacted me was that this was really an effort where our staff recognized that there was a problem, was very proactive in saying, it doesn't matter the fact that people before me may have not done things, because a lot of this took place before the current staff was in there, but we're going to make sure that we can get the most life out of it before we go and ask for it to be put into that master plan for our planning. So I felt like that was important, because I think in the long run, what our staff's done is probably saved us money, and then before we had spent it. So is that, did I leave anything out? I'm trying to think.
Just, if I could reiterate one more thing, now, if Mr. Burkhart can reassure you on this, that maintenance facilities actually get together, like at the Crystal River High job, and they sit down and they actually go through the actual installation and operation of the chillers, that way everyone understands how it's being built and how it's going to operate, because once Alan closes out the job, it becomes John, Calasante's job, and maintain it. So there's kind of a full, seamless operational system there, from him to John, that way, that's the way they operate. So everyone understands the full operation. Chiller's already a little unique in how they operate.
And, and Mr. Block, there was something about that school that always was surprising to me, was, am I under the understanding that of the newer schools, that's typically in part because of that chiller, been more of an energy cog than a light schools?
And Alan can certainly explain that, but the way they were built is the open-air plenum?
Plenum, yeah.
Okay.
There's no return air duct port.
Where like in Central Ridge and some of those improvements, we, that, this board has changed that from that design and done it. So I think that it is one of those, you know, where we do learn, but I think the fact that we've put that into play and, and are making those choices today. I believe the energy efficiency of this new unit is significant also in what we're doing, which actually not only was going to be a larger unit, but actually I think was going to operate at near the same cost, but actually be, but have a tremendous amount more output. Mr. Block, would you explain that? Because I know, and I was going to talk about some of that, but I think that's a huge point in this.
The way that Mr. Burkhart and the engineers are looking at doing the bid this time is actually looking at a 15-year life cycle cost, not just looking at the actual cost of the chiller, or actually looking at how much is it going to cost you in energy, how much is it going to cost you in maintenance, and get a true total cost of the 15 years, and then award the bid based on the actual life cycle cost. We felt like that was a better way of approaching it, looking at the true cost, the total cost of the project.
Excellent, thank you for doing it that way.
Excellent, thank you for doing it that way. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. opposed? Motion carries five zero. Food service, Mr. Pistone.
Ms. Sutton, Ms. Bryant, before Alan, you leave, I just wanted to, because it was along the same conversation that we really just had with all the facilities. I had the pleasure of serving on the continuing consultant continuing contract selection process, where a lot of the things that we just voted on, we get through this approximately three years, that you do this about every three years.
Every three years, correct.
And what I'm so impressed with is that Mr. Colasante, Mr. Burkhoff, and the various components, Mr. Blocker, myself is one of the board representatives, sit there and go through the determination of which contracts, the contractors we are going to be considering for our work to allow a bid on the processes and who we will go to. Some of the things that I think so critical is, you know, this board has made it an effort to say, for example, we want to use local contractors. That particular issue on this committee, as we sat there, was very cognizant on that. Of course, what we have often is the fact that a lot of our local contractors don't always have the insurance required by statute in order to be able to execute that. But it wasn't like there's all of a sudden this list of names or people that just can bid. Each category has it. And each category, the person, the company decides whether they even are interested in that line of doing work with our district. And then they have to present not only their credentials, their insurances, as well as the fact that we're going to provide, I'm sorry, my brain just hit me, left me, referrals, but that we investigate all that before they even come on the list. And then this is, I think, the most important thing that comes back to those chillers. Mr. Colasante and Mr. Burkhoff sit there and they're discussing, was it good during construction? How was that subcontractor? What were they like after the job? How did that cost us? This is part of that ongoing selection process so that we don't get down the road and have these situations where we're kind of having to milk problems and, you know, and make problems go away. So I commend you, because Mr. Burkhoff, you're heading that up. And I appreciate how you guys have no trouble going to the gentlemen out in the field, getting feedback from them before we come together and make some of those decisions. And I just wanted to, in this facility report, thank you for that. But I'm hopeful, I appreciate, because I can tell you from behind the scenes, I think we're trying to make the decisions on the front end so we don't have problems on the back end.
Oh, thank you. Takes a lot of work from a lot of people.
Alan, is anybody writing down or journaling any of this stuff so we don't have to create a new way to go when you're replaced or gone?
He got like a syllabus, like a pre-syllabus.
I think he got nervous. He was, he was doing all great and now he's nervous.
I just need to know. Alan, I didn't say, "Debt by debt."
What a tight.
Exactly.
I think, you know, between, you know, we have project managers in our department. Maintenance has project.
So there'll be a book or a bible or something we can go to if we need to go through this again? If you're not.
Yes, they have processes that they follow.
Yeah, and there's a whole lot of records that.
Okay, good.
Yeah. And I may have to keep to track exactly what Mr. Kennedy described.
And I definitely think that it's reviewed. That was the other piece, you know, of when we are in the middle of those big construction projects versus now when we're into more maintenance, how are we, you know, adjusting for that?
We just forget it and move on, and then we've got to go back to it. And I'm thinking, wait a minute, we need to know what he did. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Pistone.
Okay, we can eat when he's talking.
Yeah, we can. This is good.
Sorry, they came to you so late and probably a little bit cold now, but. We served those today at a promotion that we were doing, so we figured we'd let you see what we do.
Whole grain?
Schools. Whole grain bun, 100% beef. And then we fed those to the students and took feedback. And we're doing a promotion for the next two weeks. All grain levels. And then they're voting on the three sandwiches. It's a promotion with Tyson, we're calling it the Sandwich Series with the World Series that's going on. So staff dress up in baseball outfits and so forth and making kids get excited about it. And then they'll vote and we'll pick the best sandwich and we'll put that on our menus for the future. Anyway, but that's not what I'm here, I'm not here to talk about that. I'm here to ask for approval to utilize our state, the state contract to acquire cafeteria furnishings and courtyard seating for Citrus High School.
So do we have courtyard at La Canto?
Do we have a courtyard at La Canto? Currently, we do not have a courtyard at La Canto.
I know we've got one at Crystal River.
We do have one at Crystal River.
All right.
They have food courts at La Canto. They do have food court at Citrus High School.
Yes, ma'am, they do not. And if I can explain why we're looking for a courtyard area. It's very hard when you drop off students so far from the cafeteria and we can't change the bus loop. So when the students won't come to the cafeteria for breakfast, this is our way of bringing breakfast to the students where they all gather in that courtyard.
So that's where the guidance is?
Around that area where the media center and so forth. We've met with administration from Citrus High, we mapped it all out. We have wireless capability there, so we're going to gather in that area. We'll purchase some outdoor furniture for them to be able to sit on and try and get more of our high school students to eat breakfast prior to the start of their school day.
So how, so this could be an outside thing?
That will be an outside thing, yes, ma'am. But we will still serve breakfast also in the cafeteria, okay?
Is it going to be like a bag, a box?
It'll be more of like a grab and go. The quicker we can get them through and have time to be able to do that, we'll do that. We're still going to offer the same, but it's how we'll present it to the students that'll be different. Yes, I've done that before as well, yes.
Will the kids have access to that courtyard area during their, during your lunchtime?
That I cannot speak to, we'd have to talk to administration. I think they will, but then again, I don't want to answer for Mr. Hilgert. That would be their call on that.
I think the problem with that courtyard is Mr. Muller, it's arts and classrooms. Don't they open up to that courtyard? I remember at Crystal River High School, there was an issue where they had students congregating in the courtyard during class time and it was noise issue.
They never let kids out there on the stomach, so they're usually in the cafeteria.
Yeah.
But in the morning, what boys say is when they get off the bus, very few kids will make that trek down to the cafeteria to eat, they'll just go without eating. They have that cart there, they'll stop.
That's a good, really good idea.
We really want to meet.
Really like that idea.
We have purchased outdoor trash cans too, so the school doesn't have to worry about a lot of trash being in that area. So they'll have four different trash cans to be able to throw their trash away. So we're trying to do it with minimal interruption of the start before the school day and still try and get students to eat breakfast before they start.
Are you getting fifty cables or something?
I'm sorry?
Fifty cables or?
It's more of outdoor furniture that you'll see there. It does not rust. So if it rains and everything, it's that heavy-duty furniture, very heavy, you'll be able to lift. And we'll have it there. It does meet wind load, okay, requirements, so we don't have to worry about that.
Mr. Pistone?
Yes.
How much tax dollars are going to pay for all of this?
How many tax dollars? None, it's supported by school food services, so.
Are you running your department like a private business?
Yes, sir.
And you're making a profit?
We don't call it a profit. It's a surplus of our expenses. We're not allowed to make profits.
With that surplus, you're putting that back into our schools?
All the surplus we make goes back into our facilities.
Are you funding anything else like that?
We fund positions as far as custodians, any other equipment that goes with that. We help with the warehouse staff as well. So a lot of these costs we're taking off the general fund, which goes to run the other day-to-day operations of the school district, and then we run our business.
What about renovations? Can you help us out with any of the kitchen renovations?
We have already done that, we will continue to be doing that.
You're doing an exceptional job and thank you for the surplus that you often put towards us.
Makes a team, I don't run it alone, I can assure you. We've got managers and staff that understand what it's like to run a Class A organization, so. That's a new item that we're looking to test, so probably not at breakfast time, but more like a lunch serving, a fruit serving there. It's always that perception, you've got to be careful of, although it's 100% fruit, we don't want students to leave from us and go home and ask mom, "They served me ice cream or sherbet at breakfast." It's okay to eat now at home, so it's that perception you've got to be careful of.
I do need a motion, Ms. Powers. Ms. Powers made the motion and I heard Ms. Deuchman second, first, sorry. That's right. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Pistone, appreciate it. Mr. Bishop?
You know, I really appreciate getting that online.
Yeah, thank you so much.
I wrote it yesterday and said, hmm, okay.
And what did you do in that, the day before the board meetings?
Thank you.
I apologize, I don't have any snacks like Mr. Pistone did. I would like to request the board's approval of the instructional and support recommendations as outlined on the golden line.
Yeah, you go.
Instructional and support recommended that line of the golden line.
I'll second you. We have a motion by Ms. Powers and a second by Ms. Valfor. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And you come back with candy next time.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll take care of that, I'll get it. I'll write it down.
All right. Planning and Growth Management, Mr. Dixon. Looks like we need to approve request to advertise for public hearing, policy 3.50, policy 7.35, and policy 7.71. Can we put all those in a lump sum?
Yes, ma'am, I think.
All righty.
Okay, Mr. Bradshaw.
Is that okay, Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. That would be candy, thank you.
I do want to report that the board county commissioners unanimously approved your interlocal agreement for Floral City and Citrus Springs Elementary.
Did they do that today?
Yes.
All right. Very good, very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chuck, and thank you to commissioners for approving that.
Absolutely. Okay, can I get a motion?
I made the motion to approve the request to advertise a public hearing for December 10th, 2013 school board meeting for policy 3.50. Also, policy number 7.35, investment funds, and policy 7.71, school property.
I'll second that. Thank you. We have a motion by Ms. Valfor and a second by Ms. Deuchman. Any questions or comments?
Question on page one of the first policy, 3.50. Page, it says employee and student health and mental health records. That's prescribed by court statutes, etc. Are the mental health records understood to be within that?
I think they are.
They are, okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Mr. Blocker? Budget update. Took out my gym, did a little makeshift. Now what are we doing?
Well, I just wanted to bring you up to speed on this time of the year when school districts all around the state are lean on tax revenue. Because we don't get any tax dollars, essentially it's at the end of November, end of December. So this time of the year, we get to our kind of thin on the cash flow. So we've been looking at cash flow analysis and doing cash flow analysis. And we're looking to go out and do a tax anticipation note for roughly $10 million, just to carry us through this lean part of the time. This is not uncommon, although it's uncommon for us, we've never done it. It's not uncommon for other school districts or counties to do this during the time period when you're waiting for your tax dollars to come in. You know, we've certainly seen our fund balance dwindling down, so we've, you know, used all of those dollars to do inter-fund transfers. So we are looking at, we've had conversations with our financial advisor and our bond attorney. I've talked to Mr. Bradshaw about it, so he's aware of it. Just looking at the, because you can typically go out right now and borrow this type for under half a percent and then you pay it back essentially in about four months when you get your tax dollars in. So I wanted to let you know where we're at with that, potentially maybe coming back at the end of month at the board meeting to try to find us a resolution for that.
So how much is a half a percent of $10 million for four weeks or whatever?
We, you can't go out any further than six months. We typically would go out about three months, probably want to pay it back January, February timeframe. I haven't calculated at all how we build it. Not right now, no, I've just been looking at, exploring it. We're trying to get ideas out there, we're going to SunTrust, doing a bank. It's only $10 million, it's not a big, huge issue for a lot of people to want to bid on. So we're going to SunTrust, our current provider, banker, to see if they have any interest and see what the rate. Once we get the rate, I could certainly tell you all the details and do the analysis of what it's going to cost. But it's going to be less than what we're making out in our investments. So if you go out to your investments and then take those away and use those to fund your cash flow, you're actually, you're losing money. So this is a way to actually do it cheaper.
So you want a line credit?
That's what we're looking at. But you've got to do it within rules, and it's called a tax anticipation note. Where you can do for capital projects, you do a revenue anticipation note. In this case, it's a tax anticipation note.
And I apologize, did you answer, Ms. Deuchman, as far as what that would typically cost us for six months?
No, I didn't answer that. I haven't done the analysis. We are. Right. Well, I'm hoping, yeah. If I can get under 45 or 40, yeah, if you really have.
But are we hearing that because of the shutdown, the federal government's rates are going up everywhere? Or is that just federal mortgages?
Yeah, actually, the fixed income is going down, unfortunately.
I heard that yesterday and I didn't understand what it meant.
We need a lie detector to put on all these people saying things like this.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's.
I think it started getting nervous.
Federal mortgages, F, what is it?
F A J.
F A 10, all that, I think those interest rates were the ones that probably.
They have gone up, they've ticked up with it the last month or so. But that's based on the, you know, you start hearing Bernanke when he starts talking about the Fed, the Fed rates and what the Fed's going to do, and they go up and buy all this, all these dollars. That affects the interest rates. Good, bad, or indifferent, it does. So we're looking at, we've had conversations, you know, this is the time of the year when, if we have to do it, this is when we have to do it, so.
Have we had any impact by the federal government shutdown as far as tunnel one or any of our federally funded programs?
No, because we budgeted for all those shortcomings at 7.65%. And in our bond, you know, we get our subsidy back from the IRS. We actually got that back prior to October 1st, right around the end of September. So we beat that timeline because we got a notice, anything after October 1st, they were suspending those reimbursements.
The IRS is not working.
Yeah.
They're not, they don't go to work.
Breaks my heart.
We got our, we got our subsidy back before the.
And we just did.
Yeah, we got it.
Yeah, because right now, the business, the business taxes will be September.
Yep. Any other questions? Ms. Bryant, I'll see you tomorrow.
Ms. Earl?
Ms. Hamilton?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Blocker. I need a motion to approve the maintenance.
Move approval.
A motion by Mr. Kennedy and a second by Ms. Powers. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion carries five zero. Mr. Bradshaw? Nothing from Mr. Bradshaw. All right. Board members, Ms. Valfor.
I have received, I hope all the high schools are aware of this. We have the American Legion National Rartorial Contest coming up. And I want to encourage those of you that are SAC members for high school, that please make sure your high school students are aware of this, especially for seniors. We've had very low participation as a district. And I think it's $2,500, $1,500, $1,500 is an opportunity here just waiting.
Could we get some copies of that?
Done.
All right.
I know that the high schools are getting it, but please, as board members, please encourage that those high school SAC members to get some participation going.
What's the deadline on that?
I'll give you all the details, we've got a little bit of time. It's actually going to take place in January.
Okay.
They're going to want to be prepared because they, the kids have to memorize their speeches. Have that confidence built up in the room. I've been able to see.
It's very common core.
It is. I've seen some kids do some tests. Typically, I will say, you know, the whole students walk away with this money because of the effort that they. Typically, I will say, yes, most high school students walk away with this mind because of the effort that they put in. So I would ask you to please encourage those high schools to participate. I'll make sure you get copies.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Also, because few people apply for the public schools, so the others, they apply.
Exactly, it's all about participation, isn't it?
A few things, just want to mention, we're going to start to focus on reading our SAT goals. A W T I site review. Actually, this is Angus Deutschman. Pearson and there's G E D focus now, they're, what they're doing.
Oh, they're finding it.
So it's probably something that, I know you're going to pursue, it's going to just probably out there. And you control, in other words.
Their control are?
They won't release scores.
Oh, why?
Whether provided by Pearson.
Yeah, G E D scores won't release it back to the school, so that's also a problem. That's something to follow up on here. Encyclopedia Pearson. Just, I know that there's a program called the School Zone, it's on W Y K E, it's on like five o'clock.
Gee, thanks. I mean, we're not making C S I worry about the ratings.
I just, I just knew that we had a.
Sometimes the principals do, like this week, I think this was.
You know, we used to get the cable, it used to be easy to see the local station.
They changed it to.
Yeah, I can't find it anymore, I don't see nothing on the network.
It's six twenty years, I don't know, six.
It used to be like eleven, yeah, or something.
It's some number way up there now.
Really? I kind of forgot.
But, but why?
Were you watching?
Yes, I just had the turn going, and I heard it as I was going through it, it's the School Zone, and it was the Festival of the Arts or something like that.
But Chris, do you also put a copy of it sometimes on the website?
Sometimes. Because the program's a half hour long, there's not too many places you can upload a half hour video to, a free service, you can upload a half hour video to. In fact, next week will be, you can see your fellow school board member emceeing the La Canta Middle School talent show.
Oh, no, don't do that.
Okay, just a reminder, which I'll do for the time comes, to the Festival of the Arts. On Saturday, November the second, and Sunday, November the third. But on Saturday, we're going to have Mark Garlock's chorus from Crystal River High School, Barbara Dover's band students. And then the Art in the Box competition of the Citrus County Chronicle. And there'll be competitions from La Canta, Crystal River, Citrus, and Crest.
You can bring a box in at some point.
I can bring one, yeah, after the band, if you want, and sure, that would be great, so.
You're just a cool, okay?
They are, and we have a lot more participation, we have a lot of construction always like three hundred plus students, but even more with Mr. Garlock's Crystal River High School chorus. That'll be one P M. and the band at two P M. Also, a unique thing on that particular day, Hannah's Art for the Heart. And it's a student who passed from cancer, and one of the teachers decided to make like a memorial type of donation. And at the Festival of the Arts, Mr. Ford Collins' clients from the Vander Palmer School, they're going to sell pieces of pottery. The students of the school, they made each two pieces. One, they can keep themselves, the second, they're going to sell, and the proceeds go to Hannah's Art for the Heart.
And you won an award, didn't you?
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence.
I do read my, I do read my emails.
Exactly, you know she won, because I believe you know she won, right?
Yeah.
Somebody.
That's how fun I do.
You know, it's how information gets through. It got through to, through the, you know, the art community and our Citrus County school system knew, and one of them, who is my wife, and then it got to me and I thought, I guarantee that no one else on our team has probably shared it. Because she will glory post about it.
Congratulations, Ms. Powers.
It's from the state.
It's from the state.
No, I mean, it's from the school boards, or the school system's the state, and they choose a person that they feel supports the arts, and so they chose me this year.
Well deserved.
Well, I appreciate it, thank you.
Excellent.
Are they going to write a story about you? Are they going to write a story about you?
First time we heard of it, so.
That's why I brought it up, Aaron, just for you, just for you.
Yeah, just give you the information.
We'll be going over Saturday, and they kind of be.
Excellent, excellent.
Thank you. And I mentioned the Friends of the Arts, will be, excuse me, the art teachers, art teachers will be displaying at the porpoises they normally do, it'll be the week of, seventh week in January, and it'll be displayed for seven weeks. The art teachers from Citrus County will take their art in there and be able to see it for seven weeks throughout grade. And also, in agriculture, I mentioned ag in the classroom, which happens every year. And I brought in all these agricultural magazines for you, and I left them out in the car, so I'll have to distribute them next time. But Renaissance is going to take a look again at having a garden and combine, or infusing some agricultures and.
They had a beautiful garden.
Okay, yeah. And I think that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. Mr. Kennedy.
The, the only big thing is that, like everyone, this is that time of the year where we're doing our, our school site reviews.
Right, how's that going?
I always learn so much, even with schools that I'm in all the time, because it's really an opportunity to sit down and learn about that school, their strategies, the things that they've recognized that they need to improve on, and really how they're addressing it. And it's, I can tell you that what I'm always impressed with is how the, the staff truly takes on the challenges that each of their, their schools have had. And of late, sometimes there are schools that, this is the first time they've had to deal with new challenges. A lot of it has to do with this whole craziness of the Common Core and standardized testing, the changes and all of that, and how that's, and, and they're, what I think is interesting is, is how they are nervous about overcorrecting and about maintaining things they've seen that for years have been successful, and where does that fit into it? And that's really why I would say, and I don't know if this is something for our next workshop, if we could set some time, but I know that we're all having these conversations with these schools. And I think some of it would be good, rather than just, you know, in this setting, where we maybe can come back and maybe lift out some of the things that, that those schools are doing that are, that are positive, that they're doing to correct for the challenges that they're doing. And, and maybe give some insight into those individual schools. I, I can tell you, you know, I was at Forest Ridge today, and I spent a fair amount of time at that school. In some ways, I, I was, I felt like I was taken behind the screen again. And I, and I think what was very humbling is saying, you know what, we do really well at this, but we found we need to work on this. And they take that very, not only just seriously, they take it personal. And when they have not met those goals, they, they agonize over it and then they adjust for it. I, I think that what's great is, like I talked about, we had two principals that share now, there are a lot of staff that are going from schools to different schools that are saying, we're good at this, and I understand this school is being successful over here. And then they're going over to those schools and really saying, okay, we know we need to do this, and you're, you excel in this. That's, again, that's a humbling learning experience where we say, I need to improve. So I, I think it maybe be an opportunity, and I think it's just that old thing that we talk about, maybe just that time for us to talk to one another. So I would just lift that up, and that's really just good stuff. I mean, you know, it doesn't mean that the sausage is always fun to watch being made, but sometimes I actually really do like watching it.
He has not. All right. Ms. Deutschman?
I, I.
I see you have a list.
I have a list. But sort of adding to what you have to say, I was, I was, yes, yesterday, elementary school and then a high school, and some of the things in high schools were struggling with, elementary schools can already figure it out.
That's what I saw today.
So I always, I always see my role sometimes as a volunteer, is that you take and you pollinate. And I'm always telling something if I saw an elementary school sharing, and especially the elementary and high schools, they tend to talk to each other that way.
No, they do not.
So I, I've shared a couple, and one of the tips, and I, IPS actually started this last year, and I think I shared it with other schools. IPS went around with a camera, and they were photographing what was going on in the classrooms, and examples of using, I might even show, basically something simple as anchor charge, but they were doing on their boards, or how they were presenting the lesson, all that. And then they were sharing it, like it was a powerful presentation with the whole class. And so the third grade teachers were saying, man, I didn't know this was going to be fourth grade, I never get, I never get into fourth grade, or I never see what's going on in the classroom next door to me. So it was very powerful. So this year, Floral City, Janet Reed, said she picked up a tip from Common Core training to do that using their iPads. And now they can do videos as well. So they've been running around their school, getting good examples of things that they want to make sure everybody has a chance to see. Citrus was struggling with, how do we do that? And I told them, I'll have iPad, of course, what were we thinking? So it's funny how, you know, just being able to.
There was a couple of those moments, a day in different, you know.
We, I, we had some more of those too, but it was interesting. And I know the conversations, at least as far as, when we look at the data, and all the plans are pretty much the same. Here, here's our F C A T data, here's our strategy, implement Common Core. So we talk about that conflict, that connection. So we're still going to be measured by F C A T, but we're putting all our eggs in the Common Core basket. So are we willing to give up on proficiency as measured by F C A T, being our, you know, driving force? Or are we just going to say, Common Core, when it gets going, we'll do it, and we'll have to focus still on F C A T? Because you can't do both, you really can't. And schools are saying, yes, it's, it's really becoming a problem. Like, you know, it's hard to do, to do the Common Core, and yet they still have to pay attention, and some of the next generation standards are not in textbooks, they have to find that core, and then build it back into their lesson plans, because it's not in the books that we're using, the Common Core training.
And programs and tools that were successful with one thing may or may not be successful with that other, and that was a conversation too. We can have anything we want, but we may not be able to have everything we want.
Yeah. So it's interesting, because you're right, everybody takes it really to heart and feels personally responsible, because that's how everyone is judged. And yet, what the schools are saying, our learning gains are good, our proficiency is not good, what does that tell you? The question that testing mechanism is keeping your proficiency above a certain level, but within that level, students are learning within, within the expected, you know, increase.
And medicine's playing.
So that's been a frustration. I, I spent some time with Mr. Hubert, I think last week, we're planning the Advisory, the Strategic Advisory Council training, which is going to be October twenty ninth. And we have redeveloped our essential question. Our essential question is now, not, last year I think was how to get more people involved, now it's how to make our advisory council meetings more meaningful. So what we're going to do is have our rules of the road, which I need to put together, which has to do with statutes that govern advisory councils. Some ideas on, what is, what's the substantial one, what are the requirements? Voting and, and rubbish rules and that sort of thing. And then we're going to break out into, I guess, two groups, the elementary in one group, multiply the other, or maybe do, I don't know, three groups in two groups, and, and talk about good ideas, good examples, frustrations, challenges, and how schools are meeting those challenges.
Who are you opening it up to, because I know it's.
Well, he sent email out to all the principals and asked the principals to invite their chairs, and then, or, I don't, I don't remember what it said, it was like other people.
I, I, that's what I was, I, I actually don't remember.
Because he brought like twenty people last time with him.
Did I? Well, you know what happens is the chair, if they've been a chair, there's been a chair more than once, you kind of go into some of that training. And there's, there's people that are becoming good stakeholders, that it's like, I wish that person had this information, because I do think they would be valuable.
All right, so maybe we could ask him then, just when he sends out a binder and ask if there's other people in there.
Or it's chairman friend or something.
Bring somebody. I also met with Mr. Stein, we were starting to work on our Golden Citrus Scholarship Program, which is a plan. And one of, you know, he and I both said last year, our goal is to build this up more scholarship, other than just recognition. So we have a plan in mind, going to start working on that, trying to get some corporate sponsors to each one of our recognition awards, to see if we can fill that up, to make this program very prestigious and, you know, what are we learning? Find out all the students that the community, because they promote us.
There was a student recently in some recognition that was done, and I was excited because they put down how that, they were all in the Golden Citrus, and they, it, it was, it was important to them. And I thought, that's what this was, I will find out, because I remember thinking, I've got to make sure Ms. Deutschman knows.
Yeah, because one of the things that Mr. Stein came up with, great idea, is making a little PowerPoint, a little video of some testimonials, so that when we go, we meet with some of these people.
I can get you a testimonial, thank you.
For your Naval Academy?
Yeah.
I thought of that, that people will understand that it was really, you know.
You've got some from MIT right now, you could get some there.
Stanford, the first girl was, she's out of Stanford. All right, so then I also.
It is five thirty. And we have a public hearing, so I need to recess the regular meeting and open the public hearing. Mr. Dixon?
We have three policy items for you this evening. The first one is a new policy. This is a request to adopt policy four point one one seven, early high school graduation. This policy is intended to implement Florida statute one oh oh three point four two eight one, early high school graduation. So all the language is new, and I think Ms. Nobles is here to address, give any further questions on it. It's fairly straightforward.
Okay, am I supposed to ask three times if we have anybody here?
Yes.
Oh, I hate that. Do we have any input on policy four one one seven? Anybody here with any input? Third time's a charm. Seeing none.
I move approval for policy four point one one seven, early high school graduation.
I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy and a second by Ms. Balfour, we have any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number two?
The next matter is a request to approve a revision to policy six point three seven regarding suspension and dismissal. This policy deletes citation six B four point oh oh nine, Florida Administrative Code, and adds citation six A five point oh five six, Florida Administrative Code. And that's the only change.
Do we have anybody in the audience that has any input on policy six point three seven, suspension and dismissal? Anybody in the audience with any input on policy six point three seven, suspension and dismissal? Is there anyone present who has any input on policy six point three seven, suspension and dismissal? Hearing none? Do I have a motion?
I'm on approval of policy six point three seven one, superintendent authority for.
Nope. The one above it. Six point three seven.
Six point three seven, suspension and dismissal, I am sorry.
That's okay. We have a motion by Ms. Deutschman and a second by Ms. Powers. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
And the next one, the final one, is policy six point three seven one, superintendent authority for suspension without pay. This is a request to approve a revision. The policy deletes citation six B point, six P, six B dash four point oh oh nine, Florida Administrative Code, and adds citation six A five point oh five six, Florida Administrative Code, and that's the only change.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience with any input on six point three seven one? Anyone in the audience? Policy six point three seven one? Do we have anyone with any input on policy six point three seven one? Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
Move approval of revisions on policy six point three seven one, superintendent's authority for suspension without pay.
Thank you.
Do we have room for discussion?
We do.
On the verbiage at the very, very top where it says this form of minor disciplinary action against superintendent's authority for suspension without pay. Can we strike the word minor because it's.
Yeah, because it's advertised.
It is advertised. We, at this point, we can't strike that.
We have to pull it back.
We have to pull it back.
It's existing language.
It isn't. Yeah, they only use.
It's a statute.
It was a case of, it was a statute. Yeah, they're stuck with, yeah. Okay. So at this point.
God, it's.
We're done.
Yeah. I think we are.
Oh, that's right. You are.
Minor to you.
No, it's never. Grammaticals never minor in this group. I can tell you.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
No, it's just.
No.
Who's to say it was minor?
That's right.
If you're suspended without pay, would you call that a minor, a minor disciplinary action?
It's like minor surgery. There's no such thing with my husband.
Minor, I see.
It's a minor.
All right.
I think it may be confined somewhere that, no, it's not. Okay.
I think I'll close the public hearing and I'll reopen the, whatever it was we were having. The regular meeting.
I have one more thing.
There you go, Ms. Deutschman.
Okay. So I was, had the pleasure of accompanying a group of students who were from a middle school to this Smithsonian exhibit at the museum that I helped facilitate. I guess I would say I was approached by the museum curator, Kathy Thompson, not Taylor, Thompson, Taylor.
Thompson, Taylor, same thing.
Turner.
Turner.
Thank you. And Sophia Fonseca, who's a member of the historical society, wanted to bring this exhibit to Citrus County. They'd gotten a grant and they just asked me if I would help in being a liaison with the school system because what it would require would be that teachers needed to attend a training session so they would know about it and then they could help build in the stories that this Smithsonian exhibit portrayed as part of their lesson. And then they would have a number of activities. There was time capsules, students prepared things to go into a time capsule. There was another thing about writing essays. So if you recall, last spring, I had the teachers for breakfast at my office, the train station.
That's right, yeah.
Train station. And they had a whole day training. I guess, I don't know, like 50 teachers or 60.
Cool.
Gave up their Saturday on their own time to go and sit.
Teachers do that all the time. Yes.
So these kids were, I was impressed with these kids. I mean, they were careful and quiet and they paid attention.
Attentive, yes.
The exhibit is in the museum, but the museum is really small, so it's really tight and it's pretty thin and something. And then they went through some other parts of the museum, including the part that has the fossils in it. Have you been in there recently?
No, I was talking with her this morning, but I haven't been.
We have fossils.
All right. This is the most amazing thing. And I was laughing because it was, let me see. No, of course, we're middle school. Yeah, I love it.
Oh, Lancaster.
Lancaster, yeah.
Brian Lancaster.
So we're both in there and the kids are in there. And there's a man there who says he's a historian and he wants to talk about the Indian wars and all that. And on the wall is this great big exhibit that's made in plaster and it has two dinosaur heads. And he said it was made by a teacher and student. So I went and looked at it. It was Mr. Bryant's. And there was a man who was a Disney animator and he got involved and he made the mechanical mechanism for the dinosaur heads to open and close. It's just, and so the dinosaurs pluck to each other.
And imagine.
Yeah. And then there's all these fossils and stuff that the kids put like as if it was an excavation and they found stuff they didn't. Of course, what Mr. Bryant used to do is they got the yard dinosaur. So the historian was talking and there's the atheist that also speaks. And Mr. Blaine had, and the historian said, we don't really have time for the dinosaur. We'll go over and look at the atheists. And Mr. Blaine, of course, the kids left. We turned it on and they're amazing. The dinosaurs are amazing. Well, sadly, the museum said that they're running out of room and they think they're going to have to move the dinosaurs.
Can we find a place for the dinosaurs?
Well, I said, well, we're dinosaurs.
Dinosaurs are part of Common Core, right?
It's also like the higher order thinking question. What does one dinosaur say to the other dinosaur? Like they were hundreds of millions of years apart.
In your extent.
But anyway, I don't know how long this exhibit is going to go.
Now, where was this one taken?
It is December.
It is the last, last.
December.
I missed, yeah, I missed the grand opening because I was out of town. But yeah, it's mostly picture boards and it has some sort of interactive things that go on. And, you know, the curator takes them through and kind of narrates a little bit. There was an opportunity for great questions, but it took less than a lot of time to do that, but it's very interesting. And then the historical society put out the newsletter this month and one of the kids says, best field trip to handle it here. So I guess it's really light. Maybe have one more group going through that.
I think today.
The marine science station, you know, the dinosaurs because of that's kind. And then there's a lot of students that come through there.
I don't know. I told you, if people, you would let us know. It's really big. I don't think they'll be there.
It wasn't in the snow.
But you guys, you redid the whole reason? I'm there.
Where?
Marine Science Station.
Well, we did. Yeah, but it's big. It's really big. I mean, it's huge. It's a wall.
Always a dead.
But it's great. And it's like, we can talk with each other, you know? And that was my first talk too. When I first saw it, I thought, okay, now, how many millions of years ago did you live in the Ulysses? This is right. But you did.
Yeah, it's very interesting. So anyway, so that was a really great experience. The kids were great. Excellent. I'm going to call it on Friday.
Me too. I'll see you there.
I only get to stay four days.
Okay. Well, I'll see you. Maybe we'll see you.
Is it Chumulash?
You know, some of these few places up in the snow.
I did snow.
Doesn't step every reason.
Who knows? Are we going to march in the Veterans Day parade? We always do. I understand Ms. Powers is going to be out of town, but here's what we do, Ms. Balfour. We meet at the high school, Citrus High School, about 9:30. And we have a bus and that's our parade. Us and the bus.
But we walk in front of the bus.
And normally children from Pleasant Grove join us.
IPS.
At IPS, thank you. At IPS.
Are they throwing out books again this year? I mean, handing out books? I don't mean that.
We always.
Bookmaking, is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
At least not to Bronson.
Yeah. So 9:30 on the 11th. Great.
The largest in the South.
I think it is the largest.
Does it?
Ms. Bryant, can we start our public input and as long as we reserve time for 5:45 or anybody else that comes?
We can. We can do that. Let me see Lori Lenore. Thank you for waiting.
Oh, you're welcome.
I appreciate it.
It was very informative.
All right.
Now, I just want to say good afternoon to everyone. Just want to take an opportunity to give some positive input to the board. My name is Lori Lenore and my daughter McKenna Lenore is currently a seventh grader at Crystal River Middle School. And I just want to take a minute to talk to you about my experience as a parent in the school system. And McKenna started, she attended Homosassa Elementary from kindergarten to fifth grade. And in that six-year span, it was an absolutely wonderful experience. Very positive, not perfect as the development of the child goes, you know, from being a five-year-old to a 12-year-old. But it was a wonderful, wonderful experience for me and my husband and my child. And the teachers were great. Communication was wonderful. We had open communication between the teachers. If we had a concern with McKenna or her progress, we could speak to the teachers. The support staff was wonderful and administrators were also wonderful. And if there was any issue that needed to be addressed, it was done properly. And many times we would even collaborate. I would go in for meetings. We could collaborate and decide what direction we could take to help McKenna achieve her goals as a good student. And I felt that the teachers really cared about McKenna and what would happen with her and would she obtain her goals? And I really feel that they cared about her. And I not only felt that about my child, but all the other children because I was also a volunteer at the elementary school. And I was in the classrooms and I saw the interaction between the teachers and the children and how hard those teachers work to help those children attain their goals and be the best students that they could be. It's difficult in many times. There's issues that come every day and there's difficult students, but those teachers work so hard. It's just really inspiring to me. And you can imagine coming from that environment of a small, home-like environment in the elementary school, as my daughter approached middle school, we were very, very concerned. My husband and I were like, oh my, we're going from this wonderful little environment to middle school. What in the world is going to happen? And I have to say that McKenna is now in her second year of middle school and she's doing great. It again has been a wonderful experience. We've gone from one teacher that she has in a day to seven teachers. And there again, the communication is wonderful. If there's ever a concern, I can contact them via email or phone. They contact me very quickly so that we can deal with any issues or problems such as algebra. Oh, my gosh.
Poor McKenna.
But it's just been a very, very positive experience for me. And it's been a very nurturing environment for my daughter and she is a wonderful student. And. Thank you for taking this time. Oh, thank you. And I just want to, I think we should commend the teachers and. How slow is it? And, oh, you're welcome. And my time must be up.
Your time is up.
I am going, then, thank you so much for the opportunity. It is. Good to hear. Good stuff.
Thank you, Ms. Lenore. We appreciate it. Okay, Dr. Cromartie, did I pronounce your name right? Thank you. You're up. Thank you for waiting. Sure are. Of course you get in wonder.
First of all, good evening to everyone. How are you?
Forget it.
I'm a lady on the machine. I, in my own life, you see a woman who's been through 11 diagnosed diseases. I stand before you even this evening with a tumor and I left it all over my brain. And there's nothing left to do but decide, don't hide it out of my brain, okay?
State your name, please, for the record.
Oh, my name is Bobby Jean Cromartine.
Thank you.
I can see why this anger ministry is mine or this anger training curriculum is mine because I've been through so much. I should be either in jail or dead by now. Because the night that I was getting ready to kill my ex-husband, a friend came over and said, Bobby Jean, what you gonna really do? I was at level four of anger. I was furious. But besides the 11 diseases and standing here, like I said, with a tumor, I've had the grandma seizures, nose bleeding, et cetera, et cetera. What I'm saying is that I've learned how to control my anger because I use my own program. There are 16 types of anger. And that's based on the fact that since I've been 1984, I've been certified by the CAP Agency here in Florida. I'm a Myers-Briggs type indicator administrator and interpreter. So in the book that I wrote, I developed my own anger type assessment. And it is definitely valid by now because I've been doing this since 1984. So I'm able to be comfortable with saying my assessment is valid. Other 16 types I've noticed in the trainings that I do for DJJ and some of the other, but mostly DJJ formations, I find that a lot of the students in those trainings are people like Robert Redford, Clint Eastwood, John Glenn, John McCain. In other words, what I do for each of the anger types, I identify modern personalities as well as biblical characters, as well as teachers or whatever who are like these young folks. And I deliberately let them know, as a matter of fact, the young man that I was with last night, I said, do you know that Billy Graham, Oprah Winfrey, was your type? And when I said that, his eyes lighted up because I tried to let them see you need to rearrange your thinking so that you can be the best person that you can be and don't allow, because one of the things I've discovered over the years is that our young people try to operate out of their parent ego instead of their child ego. So they go into a classroom and they assume the posture of a parent. And I've never had so many young folks come to me because they decided to fight a teacher. Well, you can tell I'm real old school. I'm from the old school where it was yes, ma'am, no, ma'am, please, may I? Thank you. Young folks don't do that anymore. So once they leave me, and the only way I'm able to get their attention is that I call my curriculum a self-curriculum. And if you know anything about your history, back in the 17th century, there was a young man named John Amos Comenius who was designated the very first modern educator. And he kept saying, why don't we deal with the inner factors? In my trainers, I do not tell anybody who you are. You tell me. You give me a report. And then once you give me the report, I monitor and adjust. And I think too many of our parents, too many of our teachers, too many of our adults, period, don't take the time to monitor and adjust. Everybody is sermonizing, preaching and telling. Okay.
Dr. Cromartie, you are out of time.
Oh, my goodness gracious. Okay.
I appreciate the information you've given us and we will, we will look at it.
Well, what I want you to do is to legislate, like you did the bullying, legislate that there needs to be training for anger. Because there are too many of our young folks who are killing themselves.
We agree.
And that needs to stop. And the only way it's going to stop is that they understand who they are, know their strengths, know their weaknesses, their emotional blueprint, things that they do to make people angry and things that people do to make them angry.
Exactly.
So I need it legislated, okay?
Thank you very much.[1761.61]